Welcome, everyone. Welcome. I'm Christine Robideau. For those who don't know, I'm the Chair of the Community Advisory Committee. I'm also on the Planning Board and Land Use Committee. And we're really glad you're here today and thanks to those who also came yesterday. I want to just start by thanking the volunteer members of the Planned New Hampshire Sherret Team that are with us today. Some traveled further than others, but everyone was blessed with this beautiful day. So, thank you to them for spending the day here in Temple. We're going to continue to work with what they're going to recommend to us today. They're going to continue working on it after they leave here, just to fine tune and give us a really nice presentation, which you'll get a preview of today. So, thank you to the Planning New Hampshire Team. There are a number of other people to thank for making this event happen. The Select Board was supportive of this idea from the beginning and helped guide the targeted project areas that we're going to talk about and identify the challenges and opportunities. The Temple Land Use Research Committee did a lot of the legwork that was in the application for this sherret and the research behind it, the surveying, all of this stuff has been done over several years. So, thank you to them and in particular, Tim Fisk for being our fearless leader. The Planning Board? Yeah, sure. Always welcome the opportunity to embarrass Tim. The Planning Board got the conversation started several years before and probably even before I got involved. So, I just would like to recognize them that this has been a really tough problem to tackle around affordable housing in particular. So, thank you to them for the work that they did and their bravery and putting it out there. And this all came up, as you may recall, because of the school enrollment going down and trying to figure out ways to attract younger families. So, every town board and committee and the Temple Historical Society, as well as the Highway Department staff enthusiastically supported bringing the Planned New Hampshire Sherret Team here to town. And we also like to thank them for their willingness to be part of the conversation, to help us broaden the conversation and to be more inclusive. New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority awarded us the grant that allowed us to bring the team here to Temple. Small towns like ours really need that kind of support to take advantage of such a great resource like Planned New Hampshire. So, thank you to them and thank you to Planned New Hampshire for lowering the cost of the sherret to meet the grant amount. So, that's also was really important. Several town board and committee members covered the costs of the food for the team over the past two days and this helped us keep costs down, in fact, to adjust the cost of publicizing the event, which was the mailer that went out. Randy Martin at Timberdoodle Lodge provided lodging for several of the Planned New Hampshire Team members who had to travel some distance to get here. And during a busy season like this, we really appreciate them opening their doors and welcoming our guests. The Temple Congregational Church allowed us to use their space and also I think their tea kettle, as well as maybe some other kitchen supplies that we needed. So, thank you to them for being so generous. Their community spirit was shining through. The Temple Volunteer Fire Department Personnel hosted a cookout for the team today, which was really great and we really appreciated that. Thank you for giving up your Saturday afternoon to cook for the team and for your good cheer and good food. The Temple Ladies Aid, sorry, it's kind of a long list, but I'm trying to go through quickly. The Temple Ladies Aid and the Connolly Brothers Ice Cream provided desserts and sweet treats over the last couple of days and it was really great for the team to get that little bit of sugar rush when they needed it and in such a delicious form. So, I'm just going to quickly introduce the Community Advisory Members that are here. That's me. Jessica Hip is with us as well. Keith Charlton, Bill Torphy, I'm not sure if he made it back today, but he was around quite a bit yesterday helping out Dana Knoll, who has had to work this weekend, so couldn't be here. And Vivian Wills, who is here for sure. There, right in front of me. So, Vivian's been super, everybody's been super helpful on the team, just pitching in wherever we needed it. And also, I'd like to take a moment just to thank our spouses as well. Because I haven't seen my husband in several days and I know that's true of some other committee members as well. You have, yes. Yes, thank you. So, thank you to all of our spouses and family members. Jessica's given up spending time with her kids today to be here, so thank you to them as well. And last but not least, you all, the residents of Temple, we thank you for showing up, for your willingness to be a part of the conversation, for your passion and your commitment to all things Temple. It's really incredible for such a small town, the turnout that we had and just for you all for being so willing to share what was really important to you. I would encourage you to get more involved. If you know me, I tend to recruit people for boards and committees, so I just really do encourage you to get more involved and I hope you get inspired by what you learned today. Or maybe you have some other idea that you want to share that you haven't heard. So, please do come to meetings and hear what's going on and get involved when and if you can. I think that is about it for my list. I'm going to turn it over and introduce the Planned New Hampshire Executive Director. That's Tiffany Tonini McNamara.
Thank you, Christine. I know that was a long list of thank yous, but I feel like it just really encapsulates the hospitality that our team has felt since we've been here in Temple. So, thank you all and everyone that Christine mentioned and even wasn't able to mention. It's been a wonderful two days. So, as she said, my name's Tiffany. I'm the Director of Planned New Hampshire. I don't know where to point this. There we go. We are a nonprofit organization in the state of New Hampshire whose mission is to foster excellence in planning, design and development of New Hampshire's built environment. So, we do a lot of different things, but what's most important today is that one of our signature programs is our Community Design Sherret Program. And on our website, we have over 70, this is our 72nd sherret that we've done and we've worked in many communities, sometimes more than once, from large cities to small towns. And so, if you wanted to see some of those reports, you can on our website. But real quickly, what a sherret is, it's a fancy French word, but it's a brainstorming session. And for our purposes, it's really about planning and design and the built environment. And we bring together a group of volunteers to come into a community for an intensive two-day process. And so, we're really responding to an application from a community about a challenge or a concern that has been identified by that community. So, our volunteers, who you will meet today, many of us will be speaking, are designers, architects, planners, engineers, traffic engineers, all kinds of different folks with different specialties related to housing, environmental issues, whatever it is we need to make the sherret a success based on the community's challenges that they've presented, that's how we put together a team. And they come from all over the state to be a part of this two-day process. And again, they're volunteering their time and their firms are volunteering their time. And what the two days looks like, for some of you who might not have been a part of yesterday or however you've been a part of it, is we come in, we tour the area. We see it with our own eyes, with our raincoats on yesterday. It was great. We have a meeting with stakeholders, which usually includes if the town has staff or if there are key board members of committees, commissions, business owners. And then we do two community input sessions. We did one during the day, one in the evening. And everyone and anyone is welcome to join us. You guys had a great turnout yesterday. So, I think that's something for the whole community to be proud of. And then today, our team was working, working, working all day, sketching, talking, talking about everything we heard and learned and what kind of recommendations we were going to present based on everything from yesterday. And now, we're at the final report out. So, that is the quick and dirty of what a sherret is for Planned New Hampshire. And here's our actual team. You're going to hear from most of us either presenting or during Q and A. I won't name all of us, but as you see, we're from all different kinds of companies, organizations, and it's really a wonderful thing that these folks are a part of. So, I also want to thank them for being a part of this program. And we have two team leads, co-leads, Brian Pratt from Fussin' O'Neill and Sarah Reitzman from New Hampshire Housing. So, I'm going to hand it off to Sarah, who's going to get us going on the specifics of Temple.
I was going to say, I was going to grab Christine's glasses so she can see the presentation. So, hi, everyone. Sarah Reitzman from New Hampshire Housing. Absolutely thrilled with sort of what we've seen and heard and done over the past couple of days. So, why did Planned New Hampshire come to Temple and why did we do this? So, Temple invited us here, folks in Temple invited us here to do this work and address some of the issues that you have. And so, that might be, and if you were part of the discussions yesterday, you're familiar with a lot of what of these issues are. So, the parking challenges in the Village Center, what we're going to do with the DPW building, reimagining the town properties in the focus areas. And Brian's going to tell you more about those specific areas, the target areas that we looked at while we were here, thinking about sort of social and recreational opportunities. We'll certainly talk about those. And then, of course, to address, this was the impetus for this sherret was to talk about housing and affordable housing in this community and where there are opportunities and where there's opportunities for creativity. And when I say that Temple invited us to come here, I mean like all of Temple. So, these were the letters of support that were with the sherret application and it's more than I think I've ever seen for any other sherret, that every sort of board and committee in Temple was involved in the sort of creation and the application being submitted and was really supportive of us coming here and doing this work. So, that's really lovely and that's another thing that Temple should be proud of. I think I'm handing it over to Brian Pratt, my co-lead now.
Great. Brian Pratt, Fussin' O'Neill. I'm a civil engineer. I'm also on the Board of Directors for Planned New Hampshire. And I absolutely love these sherrets. Thank you all. This is a great turnout. I'm happy to see all your faces and all the involvement that you've participated in over the last two days. So, specifically on the sherret, the application had three distinct areas. So, Area 1, we're calling, up in red, is the Village Center. That's where we're at right now. Area 2 is the Holt and Skledany Land, which is about 67 acres or so, just outside of the Village Center. And then, the third area was what's called the TES Neighborhood. It's the Temple Elementary School. It's about, I think it's 18 or so acres, just adjacent to the school. So, as Sarah and Tiffany mentioned yesterday, we came and we got a tour. So, these are just some photos of us touring in the rain. And then, in the sessions, the stakeholder and the public listening sessions, we asked some questions. We wanted to know what everyone sees when they look at these areas. And the other question was, what would you like to see? And the third question was just basically open-ended, just what else would you like to know? So, what we heard from the full day yesterday was that the Village District is an active, quaint, charming, charming was repeated a lot, historic, and it has a small-town feel. Repeated concerns were that there was parking issues, that people don't really know where to park. With the activity, there's a lot of different uses. There's the library, there's the Town Hall here, there's the DPW Shed, there's the Birtwood Inn across, there's the Village Green across the street. So, the parking is just a little bit disorganized. There were concerns about safety for pedestrians and vehicle speed. As we know, this is a state highway. Cars kind of go pretty fast through there. Sight distance isn't great and people are kind of crossing and, you know, combined with the parking concerns that really makes some safety concerns. And then, one of the other discussion topics was the potential relocation of the DPW Shed back here. And we received very mixed opinions on that. Some people wanted to move it, some people didn't want to move it, some people wanted to have some improvements. So, we got the whole spectrum of opinions on that one. And one thing that we really observed is that this community is very proud. Everyone really loves this community, from what we can see, the letters of support, everyone that showed up. We're all very impressed and a sherret is not a success unless we have really good information coming in. So, based on those, the second question was, what would you like to see? Overwhelmingly, people did want to see parking improvements. They wanted options, though. They wanted to see some simple improvements. Some people wanted to see some more major improvements. Pedestrian safety was pretty across the board. Everyone wanted to see it a little bit safer for pedestrians, places for people to walk, some lighting. It's very dark. After the listening sessions at 8:00 PM, we were out there and we observed how dark it is. Preservation of the aesthetic and the green space and the small-town feel was very important, I think, everyone. Again, the relocation of the DPW Shed, there were very mixed opinions. And then, there were a fair amount of people that didn't want to do anything. Area 2 was the Skledany Land and I've been trying all the last two days to say that right and I have to read it every time. So, what the observations were overwhelmingly is that there's some topographic and wetland challenges. So, it's a difficult lot to develop. We observed that the town purchased it and they didn't really know what to do with it. So, that's part of the reason we're here. We know that there's been some potential for some DPW Shed relocation on this property that, again, mixed opinions. What the overwhelming majority said, that this would be perfect for recreation, trails, preservation. And then, some people said that potentially, maybe some of it could be used for some housing. The last property, Area 3, is the TES Neighborhood down by the Temple Elementary School. What people let us know is it's close to the school, the field, it's kind of interconnected with the elementary school and the reservoir is just to the north. A lot of people said that this would be a great site for some potential neighborhood housing, to attract some families. Solar array was discussed, its proximity to the distribution line. And there seems to be a significant interest in potentially doing some solar there. And then, recreation, a lot of people said, you know, maybe some trails, maybe some other recreational features could be good there. So, at this point, I can turn it over to Steve.
Hello. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the existing Village Center. Some of the opportunities we recognized were sort of reorganize your parking needs. The suggestions you're going to see here are really just trying to reinforce what you're already doing and sort of formalize and organize it. We also looked at complete streets to help promote some traffic calming. 45 is pretty busy, as well as General Miller Highway. And these are sort of ideas that are consistent with your master plan. We also wanted to look at increasing visibility and safety with lighting options. As Brian mentioned, when we were walking across the street there yesterday around 8:00, it is a little bit dark there. So, just taking a look at what you have for assets already, one of the things we noticed is that you've already tried to reclaim some of the space in front of the library, which is great. And then, we also looked at existing parking areas across the street, as well as what's in front of the Town Hall and other buildings there. The other area that we noticed was this location, primarily because the contours start to plateau at this point. So, that sort of is another option to look at for some parking. We understand that you've already taken a look at Firehouse Lane as an option. The way we were looking at it is that we tried to understand the usage. So, General Miller Highway and 45 have about 1,200 cars a day, whereas this is about 90 vehicles a day. So, about 10% of the use or a little less. So, we're trying to figure out if this could be perhaps an answer to our parking solution. The other thing we were talking about is trying to combine this island right here and try to give back some of that green space to sort of match what you guys are doing in front of the library. So, we're trying to break this up into zones to get an understanding of how we can support events like the Harvest and as well as your sort of weekday parking needs. So, we looked at these areas as being sort of the busiest and this location down here near Firehouse is sort of an event parking option. And when we look at that, just with a quick overlay to get an idea of what we could possibly do, we'll start over here and work our way over. So, we were thinking of some handicap accessible spots here where the plateausies are near the War Monument. And as we worked down here, we would consider doing some angled spots. We heard from, just I think, a pretty good consensus that striping is not something that people want to look at. So, we were suggesting maybe some cobblestones to sort of designate where parking zones are. Granite's pretty common in New Hampshire and it's pretty easy material to get a hold of, at least. The other things we were also looking at across the street is you already sort of used this as head-on spots. So, we're sort of formalizing that and creating one of those other granite cobble sections here, so that someone would still know to turn into here for the inn. We think we get about seven to eight spots here. The other area we looked at, which is the event parking areas, right down here, that yields about 20 spots, give or take. And the idea was that we'd still create some sort of connection here, whether it be a footpath or something that goes from this lower parking section to the upper parking section. This parking lot would probably want to utilize some plantings or screenings to sort of create, you know, keep that village feel without, you know, having this parking space here. Materials for this parking lot could be hard pack, doesn't have to be pavement, but just an idea that you have a designated parking space that could probably still be used for other things when events aren't coming through town. The other opportunity we talked about was lighting improvements. This seems to be a pretty natural crossing on this road. So, our thought was that that could be an opportunity to sort of add lighting to create safety and should be explored. And Ivy, do you want to?
So, one of our recommendations is that the town of Temple adopt what's called a complete streets policy. And what that does is it says that as a town, we are committed to creating streets that are usable by cars, by trucks, by people on foot, people on bicycles and horses, scooters too, I guess, anyway. And what I suggest you do is take a look at the complete streets policy that was adopted by Troy, which is a town not too dissimilar from you. Take a look at that and that would be a good template to use to adopt yours. And once you've adopted a complete streets policy and identified this piece of 45 as an area of concern where you would like to see some traffic calming and you'd like to see this look less like a highway and more like a street. So, this is a typical section for a street as opposed to a highway. Right now, your lane widths are about 14 feet. That's Route 495. You don't need it and you don't want it. 45 is telling people by its design, you want to drive fast here. This is a driving fast place. So, what we would recommend is that you start your traffic calming up here and neck down the road to an 11-foot lane. And an 11-foot lane will accommodate anything on the road, anything on the road. So, that gives you a 14 for the state highway would still have, they'd have a 19-foot buffer strip on each side to 11-foot lanes. If you wanted to divide it differently, another thing you could do is you could give them, the state could have less and we could put, you know, a planting strip down the middle as another way of saying, hey, you're not out on the highway anymore. You're coming into town. If you didn't want planting, because it's, you know, problematic to plow, that's another place you can put cobbles, is you can do a cobble stripe down, which makes it look and feel very different from just a rural highway. So, I recommend that you explore those possibilities, both internally and with the Department of Transportation.
Thank you very much, Ivy. I think next we have Chris talk about the DPW yard.
So, yesterday, we had some varying opinions on what to do at the back here. So, we kind of came up with two possibilities. One is essentially leaving it as-is, just kind of formalizing some of the parking around Town Hall and the library and then creating a green space for the library to use for their special events. And we would keep, you know, all the DPW buildings and potentially look at moving the sand pile to create more flexible parking in the back. So, then we created another possibility, which would be if the DPW moved to a new location. And that really opens up quite a few possibilities there, create parking for about 60 vehicles. We also thought it could be a good area for the Historical Society to put their building as well. And then, it just opens up more green space to use for both the Historical Society and the library for their events, as well as potential green space next to Town Hall and also creating pedestrian access from the parking down to the main street. So, now I'll pass it off to Randy.
Okay, so Ivy and I looked at the Skledany Holt property, which is known as Area 2. So, one of our ideas, and there's several options. We know that the, this has a pointer, right? I did it. So, we know that originally there was a design here to put the DPW garage here. There's also a conceptual layout for it about this location. And then, there's also some thought about putting it where this first pod is that I put up here. We've looked at it, we think, obviously, actually, one of my thoughts was maybe as a town, you come together and do the sherret process, but just for the DPW garage and where it could go and what might be another possibility for it. So, we looked at this with the intent to preserve most of it and create walking trails. So, if this were to be developed, if the town didn't own it, I think that's on the next slide. Yep. So, it's about 67 acres, the two lots together. We would take out Reserve 2 for the potential location of a DPW garage somewhere on it. So, if we're using your PRD standards, you would take out steep slopes and wetlands to come up with your density. So, having it not be mapped, we did our best guess. So, we assumed that 60% of it would be usable upland. So, if you took the 65 acres and multiplied by 60%, it leaves you with 39 acres of upland. And if you divide that by three acres, you could potentially get highest and best 13 homes. Assuming those 13 homes were four-bedroom units, there's a possibility of four bedrooms being built on that property. If you take that 52 and you divide it by two-bedroom smaller housing, there's a potential for 26. We thought that was a little too heavy. So, we went with a density of two pods of 12, just to show you what could happen there and it could be a different layout. But we chose a very close-pocket neighborhood, cottage neighborhood is another word for it, where the homes are two-bedroom. And if we go back to, I can do that. Yep. So, they, excuse me, they would be two separate pods of 12 units each. They would all face a common green and walkway with parking in the back. We talked with the traffic engineer that's here today and about the only safest and best entrance for this property is directly across from the existing road. So, it would be good to coordinate an improved intersection with the DOT, because that intersection actually comes in at an angle. So, it would make it safer for that neighborhood and it would also create a safe entrance for this neighborhood. So, if you divided this into two pocket neighborhoods, there's also the potential of putting in a gravel or hard-packed parking lot for about 15 to 20 spaces, which could act as a trailhead for all of these trails, but it's also in walking distance to the downtown for events like the festival. Again, it's hard to see, it's in black here. There would be a loop road that came in to reach this and all parking would be in the back. And then, they would all share their front doors and front walks would be on an axis through the development with entry walkway here as well. The thought was there could be a community garden and a garden shed or some focal feature. So, as you're watching. So as you're walking, you do have a, a view at the end. This is just one idea and Ivy's going to go over other ideas for housing, affordable housing and neighborhood housing. And so the other aspect on that was to look at the DPW garage and Ivy's going to talk about the option here.
So we knew that one of the issues with the DPW garage was the question of, you know, the visual impact on Senator Toby Highway. And then, you know, in every direction. So what we propose here is instead of coming in over here, which is going to require a lot of earth moving in order to get that, that entrance road at at a percent that you can get machinery up and down it. We recommend coming in over here where the grade's a lot gentler coming around. And there's the hill, there's a hill here. So what we're suggesting is that you build your, your highway garage. And this is the size of the one that, you know, you drew. So you, that you set that back into the hill like a bank barn. You all have seen bank barns where they back up into the hillside and the, you know, the one, there's one story above the top of the hill. And then there's, you know, more depth in front of it. That's what we're recommending here. And then this is the yard, which allows people to move stuff around. And then the salt shed, stockpile, stockpile. So all of this remains undisturbed along Senator Toby Highway. So it seems like it's a less disruptive version of that plan. And, you know, when we talked about it, this did seem like the most logical place to put it. If you can come up with a plan that's acceptable. So that's one possibility.
Do you do this or do I do this? All right, let's see if I did. Okay, so here we're talking about the, the elementary school neighborhood. So this piece of land is about 18.2 acres. This area over here, there's about five acres of steep slopes. So in looking at the way you would do a PRD type of development here, you would have to subtract that from the buildable area. So we're left with about 13 acres of developable area on this lot. So one idea we, we have is to use some traditional forms that you see not only here in the state of New Hampshire, but here in Temple as well and throughout New England. It's, you know, this is always, there's a, there's a saying about this, this is the big house, little house, back house, barn. And usually what happened in history was the little house came first. Finally got some success, made the big house. And then during, while farming and everything, you were making the back house and the barn as well. So this is the kind of thing where you could put multiple living units in, but it would look like what everybody says is a traditional quaint New England setting. So it doesn't, character wise, it doesn't change the, the town. So in this case, we're looking at approximately going through the same type of calculation that was done before. On the other, other property, we, we assume that if it was 13 acres, that would be about four lots. That would be four bedrooms per house per lot, typical. So that would be 16 bedrooms. And in this case, I also assume that zoning allows 180 per lot as well. So I added in one more bedroom. So it's like five bedrooms per lot. So five times 20, five times four is 20 bedrooms. So the idea here is that you have one, one structure here that represents that sort of little house, big house, back house, barn. Another one, little house, big house, back house, barn. These are covered parking sheds. And this is another like a duplex structure. So that this would represent getting about 20 plus or minus 20, it could be more, it could be a little less bedrooms, which would be mixing between potentially one-bedroom units and two-bedroom units. So you could end up with 10 two-bedroom units or you could end up with five one-bedroom and seven two-bedrooms, something like that. We also, you know, kept the ball field. We put some community gardens around the ball field and then we reserved this area over here for a future solar site. It's enough here for more than you have plans to consider at this time. So the next option is very similar, but using a different prototype than the super traditional New England character. And that is, you know, going back to something along the lines of a cottage, cottage community. So here again, these are, in this one, it's the same sort of calculation in terms of living units. Again, we're keeping the ball field, putting in community gardens, putting in solar. And the, the structures are going to be close together. So utilities will be, you know, efficient. Same with the other one, by keeping those two larger structures closer together, we're able to, you know, keep the parking tight, keep the circulation necessary for roadways minimal, provide shared green space, which, you know, not only looks, is not only great for the people who would live there, but also is really attractive when you're driving by. So, and then, you know, these things are probably, you know, a two-bedroom unit and it's something like this, a little two-bedroom unit home here would be about 900, 950 square foot building. But, you know, it would become more of, more or potentially affordable by the density and the amount that you would, you would do. So this would be like a do it all at once kind of thing. And in order to aggregate the costs and, and keep it more affordable than it would be if you did it one at a time. So I think, yeah, that's the end of my section.
Okay, so continuing on this theme of housing, which was an impetus for the charrette and a big topic of conversation yesterday. So this is what I heard from you all yesterday. I read in your application, I read in your master plan, I read in the, the housing survey that you did in 2020. You want to find a balance of housing and rural character, of course, right? You don't want to ruin the sort of the green space, the rural, the small town charm thing. We want housing to be compatible with that. You're also concerned about the future of the elementary school, which is connected to housing because it comes to this point of talking about how to attract families, people with kids to Temple. Can they afford to live here? You'd also like to provide some options for older people who want to downsize and stay in Temple. I heard yesterday that there's nowhere for folks to go if they're older and they don't want to stay in their big house and they're looking for something smaller. I also heard you when you said that you're looking for low-cost phase incremental approaches, small steps, not big giant leaps. And probably most importantly, I heard you say that you want to do it right. So whatever you're going to do, you want to do it correctly. So I want to talk about some sort of like examples of really unobtrusive ways to increase housing supply. So, and many of these already exist in Temple. And many of them are things that you already really like in Temple, which is great. A lot of them are, are either challenged by the zoning or they're actually not allowed by zoning or they could be done better with better zoning. So one example is mixed use or adaptive reuse. So you have the, the former school here, which has three units of housing in it. You have the, the Birchwood, of course, right across the street, which has three units of rental housing in it. And then you have the, the general store, which does have this little house attached to it. So the post office is over here, general store. So this is mixed use. You've got, you know, commercial with residential, commercial, commercial with residential. And then, you know, rehabbing of an old building that was formerly used for something else. And these are great options. Another option would be something like conversions and I love conversions. I'm going to try not to gush too much about them. But this is when you take these large houses that are too big and you let them chop them up into something smaller. So you take a large 6,000 square foot house and now it's, you know, four smaller units. So this is the advantages of conversions. And this is a real one that's in Temple. It's on the other side of the library. It's either two units or it's three units. There's a little bit of disagreement among folks that I've talked to, which is actually a great thing. It goes to show you how unobtrusive it is. You're not even sure how many units are in it. I, I hear three. Who said two? Somebody else said two. Oh, okay. It's a good, good authority if you lived there. So conversions are great. Here are the advantages. They look like single-family houses from the outside because they are, or they were rather. They're a great way to encourage something like multi-generational living. So now you've got, say, an older person who lives in a large house, it's too big for them. Or they're having a hard time staying in that house. Their kids can come and live with them in a separate unit if you allow them to turn it into a duplex. So great opportunities there for multi-generational, generational living, which in turn allows folks to age in place in their community. So it helps us sort of tackle that issue of where can people downsize to. And finally, and, and this is a great option for folks who are having a hard time affording their house. This gives them a sort of an income stream to help keep their house affordable to them so that they can stay. And these are a couple of pictures. Again, they're in Temple. I don't know the story behind any of these houses. I don't think it matters necessarily. Driving around, I see all these big houses where either they've already been converted, maybe they're multifamily or there's opportunity to convert them because of their size. And whoever owns this house, if you're here, I was taking a picture this morning and he waved to me, so sorry. And another option is accessory dwelling units. And yes, Temple does allow ADUs both detached and attached. But there's a lot of opportunities in the zoning to make it better and less challenging for homeowners to do it. This is another one, just like conversions where the homeowner is becoming the home creator. It's another, it has a lot of the same advantages actually of conversions, which is that it's aesthetically pleasing. And again, both of these are ones, I kind of think this is an ADU. I think it's either an ADU or a man cave because it has a cable satellite thingy on the side. And then this one, this could easily be an ADU above this garage. Again, I'm not sure though. And that's the great thing is when you drive around, that there could be these examples of multifamily housing or these examples of accessory dwelling units that you don't even realize are there, which is great. And these have a lot of the same benefits of conversions, which is that it allows for multi-generational living. You can, you know, especially one of the great examples, what happens with ADUs is that an older person who's living in their single-family house, they want to age in place. They're having a hard time with their big house. They move into their ADU, their small house. They downsize into their ADU and then say, their grown, grown children come and live in the big house or they rent out the big house. Then you've got someone there, your house is more affordable to you. Again, these are a great example. This one's more just for fun. So I was driving around today, looking at houses and taking pictures of an examples. And I saw this one and I did not want to go up this person's driveway and intrude on them. But I saw it and I thought, this looks like a main house to me and this looks like an ADU. And I didn't get a very good picture of it, but this is very nice looking. And again, it's just another example of how great it is that you can't necessarily tell from the outside what it is. So I'm going to hand it over to Ivy. She's going to get more specific about recommendations to make it easier to build stuff like this.
Thanks. Yeah, ADUs in particular are, they're just great low-hanging fruit for getting more housing in an obtrusive way in existing neighborhoods. So one of the things that I pretty typically recommend in every place I go is that you allow two ADUs per, per lot. Your lots are really big. And so what we recommend is, you know, what I usually recommend is two ADUs, one of them in an existing building. So that you don't, don't suddenly have two new buildings. And then one can be in a new building. And that they're permissible by right. You don't have to go get a special exception or a conditional use permit or anything like that. You can just go down and pull a permit. One of the things about ADUs is that as Sarah mentioned, they get created by the homeowner. They're not a thing that, you know, developers do. It's a homeowner thing. So you want that process to be as smooth and easy and straightforward as possible. Because if I'm a homeowner and I go down to Town Hall and they say, well, yeah, we're not really sure. You've got to do this and you've got to do that. And then I'm going to decide that this is too much trouble because it's, you know, it's, it's an investment. And if it's going to be hard, I may not be able to do it. And no additional acreage, you don't need to double your lot size in order to have a detached ADU. And I recommend no requirement for owner occupancy of either the ADU or the parent house. And I'll tell you why. Lots of people create ADUs and then they want to go to Florida for the winter. And they'd like to rent both halves. And sometimes they do. It, that should not be kind of a gray area. You should be able to do that. We don't require owner occupancy of duplexes in towns that have duplexes. And I think it's probably not necessary to require owner occupancy of accessory dwelling units either. So, and the other thing that I thought about when we were talking about housing options for Temple was a village neighborhood overlay. And an overlay is a piece of zoning code that floats on top of whatever your underlying zoning code is. So it doesn't change what's underneath. It's a choice for whoever's building the thing. They can use the underlying code or if they want to, they can use the, the overlay code. The town decides where they think that overlay code should live. It could live in the village and include a little bit of the Skelley land, which would allow for those cottages that we showed you earlier. You could use it down by the elementary school to allow the development of that land, those cottages or those big house, little house, back house, barn units. You could use a village neighborhood overlay there. Another place that you could think about is, is there another place in Temple where you can imagine a village node? Another little neighborhood. I mean, out towards Timberdoodle. I mean, is there someplace? I don't know, but that's a thing to think about. That's a place you could use. So so what we, what we heard over and over is that the village is the area of town, which represents the ideal for the town. However, none of the villages conforming. None of the village conforms to your existing zoning. It's all totally non-conforming. So what I did was I looked at what was actually on the ground in the village and made recommendations for what you could do. Oh, this is not, no, we went too far. So there, there's a list of specific recommendations about how big the lots should be, setbacks, all of that, which will be in the report. But you don't need to hear that today. But the goal of the village neighborhood overlay is to recreate what you have in the village. So one of the things that we hear a lot and heard here yesterday in all of our listening sessions was, well, why can't we have, you know, houses that are affordable for young families? So this is my, my TED Talk on how, it should be how a building makes money. So if you're talking about rentals, you start with your likely rent. So in southwestern New Hampshire right now, a likely rent for a two-bedroom apartment is $1,500. Whether we like it or not, that's the truth. So the rule of the, of the developer is you multi, you take your likely rent, you multiply it by 100. Now I'm at $150,000. That's how much you can spend to build that unit or otherwise you're an ex-developer. So the single family, the cost of the, for a single-family house, the cost of a lot is approximately 20% of the finished house cost. If the lot costs $100,000, you're looking at a $500,000 cost at a minimum. So you need to understand that little two-bedroom Levittown houses are not, they are not going to get built because they're not financially possible. You can get naturally occurring affordable housing by the repurposing of buildings like Sarah talked about. You can get, you can get, you can kind of sneak up on them maybe with some cottages. But you need to understand that But you need to understand that the money is part of what makes things either happen or not happen. And I think it's, Robin is going to talk about this. Yes, it's you.
Is this on?
Yeah. You click here to advance and I think that's your pointer.
Hi, good afternoon. So places to live in Temple. This has been a great discussion about possibilities here and about financial considerations and other considerations. And so just thinking about your future of Temple, who do you want to live here in Temple? Who do you want to live here? And who wants to live here? And include yourselves in that. So think of the people who want to be here, who want to, and who, who, and who already are here or who want to be here. And think about how, where we live shapes our lives. According to, is our proximity to work, amenities, our neighbors. Think about how our neighbors are, can shape our lives, how home design and surroundings can shape our lives. All of this, think about this as you think about your future and, and how places to live can play a part of that in Temple. So communities, all communities need choices in places to live in their community. They need choices by design. They need choices by price point. And you need choices by location. Because what you're doing, these oper, these, these, what you saw, these, these suggestions, these, these, these ideas for homes, these are actually meeting needs of people, of individuals and families and households. That's what homes do. They're meeting people's needs. Sometimes they don't. So for those of you who are already here, think about you. Think about you in the room and those who are watching this. Are your needs, think about where you live now. Are your needs being met right now where you're living? Where might be the, what might your needs be in five years? Or in 10 years or in 20? Are your needs being, will your house and where, or where you live be able to meet those needs? For example, one floor living, you may be fine now, but in five years you may need one floor living. You may have mobility issues over, up to 25% of people in this country have mobility issues. And that's, most of them you can't see, but people have a hard time on uneven ground or they have a hard time with balance. Okay, so one floor living and, and that includes wheelchair accessible, maybe needed at some point. Homes for young families is a need for some folks. Some people prefer isolation. Some people want to be close to other people. So the needs are very, very different across the board. So that's something to think about when you're thinking about creating places to live in this community. What are the needs and how, what do you want your community to be? And who do you want to welcome into your community? The home designs, as I said before, that we saw earlier, suggestions and their solutions to these needs. And when you're going forward, it's going to be really important. You don't lead with solutions. You start with what do we need? What do we need in our community to meet the needs? What kinds of homes can meet the needs of those of us in our community? What designs, what locations and what price points? And what, how does that fit into your vision for Temple's future? The conversations that you're having, that we've had and we're having today and you'll be having going forward are really important. And the images that you saw are what's possible. And this information about zoning changes that, that Ivy alluded to are also really, really important. And as I said, you don't lead with solutions. You've got to start with a really deep examination from everyone, not just the people that show up, but some people can't show up. Okay, so about their needs for places to live and what choices might meet them today, tomorrow and in 20 years. So, and another thing to, when you're talking about the needs, there's two kinds of needs. The planning commissions do a housing needs assessment. That's pure data. We have X number of rental units. We've got so many single family homes. We have so many duplexes. That's really important information. But equally important is the conversations that you all have and that information you share with each other about what the needs are, about the kinds of homes. You can't have one without the other. You've got to have those. We were in a community once and a guy came to us and he said, "My wife is stuck on the second floor of our home. We live upstairs, the second floor. She's stuck up there in a wheelchair and there's no way to get her in and out." They had a need to find a place on the, on the ground floor. So those are the stories that you don't hear necessarily in the data collections, but in these conversations about what, and the people who want their children to come back, but there's no room for them, there's no place for them to come to. Temple is going to be applying for in some Invest New Hampshire funding. I understand, am I allowed to say this, Christine? I think it's, so the, they haven't completed the application, but this is going to be really important for updating the housing chapter of your master plan and also for, and then another for the regulatory review. These are really important conversations to be having. Conversations for not only just filling the needs of places to live, but really this is also part of your future here in Temple. Okay, funding and grant, that's you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. My name's Jody. Appreciate this opportunity and thank you for welcoming us into your community for the last two days. So this will be touched on in more detail within the final report that this, that this group puts together for all of you. But wanted to note a couple of these funding opportunities because we learned yesterday that your lovely community of Temple has no debt or very little debt service, which is very impressive to hear. So knowing that a lot of these things that we're talking about today are going to cost money. So we want to make sure that this lovely community remains debt free. So how are you going to pay for some of these things that are being proposed? Like moving the DPW facility and some of these housing opportunities? So here we shared a couple of options. These are just a few of very many opportunities for grant and loan programs. I was, when I was pulling this list together, I was highlighting more of the grant money because that's free money. It's money you don't have to give back. But a couple of options here, because of your rural character and your small population, you have priority status for some of these applications to receive some funding. One in particular is the USDA Community Facilities Direct Loans and Grant Program. That is money that will go towards funding public facilities, town halls, libraries, DPW facilities, equipment, fire trucks, plows, community gardens. So anything that focuses on the rural character and is a public facility, that grant and loan program will help fund. CDFA, that's Pre-Development Loan Program. That's more of a loan option. And the EPA Brownfields Cleanup Grants. That's an opportunity if and when the, the town decides to move the DPW facility, there will likely be some cleanup that needs to happen at that site. So there's grant money available to, to do that. The town can apply for up to $500,000 to, to help remediate some of that. And it's by understanding that you ran into a little bit of that with the library. So there's funding available out there. That's, that's free to the community through an application process. For housing opportunities, one option for the community to consider is 79E. That's a state statute that was recently made effective this year. And that's a housing opportunity zone that would be approved through the community, through the select board. And it allows the community to establish housing opportunity zones in areas that are defined by the community, which allows the community to essentially freeze the tax rate, if you will, to pre-development assessment. So taking a vacant piece of land and what that tax value is, and you can freeze it for up to 10 years. So that allows a little bit of incentive for someone to come in and build some housing. And then also Governor Sununu this year announced the Invest in NH program. That was $1 million that was targeted to New Hampshire communities. 60 million of it was targeted to developers to do affordable housing opportunities. And 40 million was dedicated to municipalities to do, to do studies and needs assessments like Robin just mentioned. Mentioned a couple for developers too. Not really any interest to you guys, but something to put out there that there are some incentives for developers to come in and also do some housing opportunities for you. And again, this will be in way more detail within the report, but just wanted to make sure that we touched on it because there is money out there to, to cover some of these costs.
Did you have another second? Okay, I'm up again. I'm over here because this light is otherwise right in my face. Just some closing thoughts about that, that I had on looking at all of this and thinking about, thinking about your future. Change is really hard. It's really hard. It's scary, but change is happening all the time. And right now there are forced, what I call forces of change. That's change that we can't do anything about that's happening to us. But we can, we can, we can manage how we react to it. So we have demographic changes happening right here in Temple. There's these chat, these changes are happening all over New Hampshire and all over the country. So demographic changes, think about the, how the, your demographics are changing here in Temple. Think about the economic changes that are happening. And what is that affecting? That's affecting our, our pocketbooks, is affecting our taxes, is affecting our jobs, is affecting all kinds of things. Environmental changes are happening. They're, they're affecting us right here in, in New Hampshire. The days are, the, the winters are getting stronger. The storms are getting stronger. We're not going to have as much snow. What's that going to do? Our maple syrup season is changing. All of these little things that at first it's gradual, but it is changing and it's affecting us. I mean, we taught, somebody said today something about the leaf keepers coming in. And we don't know how the leaves are going to be changing over the next 50 and 100 years. So that's going to be different too. The summers are going to be longer. So the environmental changes and the social changes, there's a lot of social changes happening across the country and here in Temple in many different ways. So the key is to prepare for them, to be aware of them and to acknowledge them and accept that they're happening. But how you react, just like anything, how you react is really going to determine their impact on Temple. And so an idea is to ask yourselves, don't look at these and, oh my God, this is happening. It's what opportunities are these opening up for you? What opportunities is in a opening up that your winters, our winters may be getting shorter? For example, what opportunities are longer growing seasons? I don't know. But think about the opportunities instead of just the, oh my gosh, the downsides. Temple to not only be, but to, is, but you also want to thrive, don't you? And a few years ago in Michigan, the Michigan Municipal Association brought together, they did a long, long study and they came up with these key ingredients to really, for community, for a community to thrive. First, it's physical design and accessibility. So for example, you're downtown. These are just things to think about. Green initiatives, which you're already undertaking, but not only the solar array and, and, and electric cars and things like that. But, but keeping green spaces is really huge. For example, cultural economic development they listed. I'm also listing especially for a place like Temple is your natural assets. How can you leverage your natural assets for economic development? Okay, economic development doesn't necessarily mean a big industrial park. You've got great natural assets. How can you leverage those? How can you support people who want to come and, and go hiking for a day? Where do they come afterwards to get something to eat or spend the night? Or get something to drink? Entrepreneurship, diversity, diversity of thoughts, diversity of people, diversity of backgrounds, of ideas, of jobs. All kinds of diversity really can help a community thrive. Messaging and technology. This was great that you got this Zoom set up in time for this. This will bring people together. The opportunities for that are really amazing to help bring your community together. If you've got a newsletter, use it. Have it sent out regularly. Keeping in touch with people, it's going to get more important as your population gets older and people get housebound, for example. They're going to need to stay in touch with others in the community. Transportation is huge. Of course, we're not going to have bus service in Temple. But there is a time as this, as the population grows older. And in New Hampshire, there are places where the population is over 65 is going to be over 30% of a community. That's huge. So we're thinking very differently about things. So down the road, starting to think about what happens when 30% of Temple cannot drive? How do we get to our doctor's appointments? How do we get to visit with our friends or go to church or go to Harvest Day? And finally, education. Investing in education is really key to a thriving community. Starting with the children and all the way through, education is really key and partnering with others to make it really strong. The other thought, closing thought that I had, just to say very quickly, remember that when you make decisions, it's not just an economic bottom line. How much does it cost? But there's a triple bottom line. There's, there's an economic cost to it, but there's also a social considerations and environmental. So for example, when you make, when you make a decision about whatever it is, not only how much does it cost, but what's the social impact of this decision that we're making? And what's the environmental impact? So those are things to think about as you're thinking about places to live, as you're thinking about moving the DPW, as you're thinking about parking spaces, as you're thinking about slowing down the traffic. What kinds of, what kinds of impact is that having? So, and finally, instead of thinking about problems to be solved, think about the possibilities. Name what is possible and start living into it. For example, your school population, it's down to in the 30s, right? A lot of people have been saying, oh, this is terrible. But instead, think about what is possible with a smaller population that you can't do with a bigger population. The town of Newcastle has 31 students. They've always had under 40 students. And yet they get prizes year after year and awards because they're doing very creative programming that they know they couldn't do otherwise. The town of Newington too, has 50 students. And they every year stay, we want to stay open because this is our community. These are our children. So there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of possibilities. What's possible if you slow the traffic down outside? What's possible if you build new trails? What's possible if you build those, 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 those great home ideas that we saw today? What would be possible if you went ahead and did that? Temple, you're in a really good place. You've made a lot of great investments and a lot of good thinking has gone in here. The recommendations you heard today are just that, they're recommendations. They are not mandates. This is your town. This isn't ours. We were invited to come in and make some, some, and share some ideas that we had based on our best professional thinking. And now it's going to be up to you to look at these ideas and to think about them and determine what, if any, could be explored further. And keep in mind the points that you just heard, that I just talked about, the triple bottom line and, and the other things and the forces of change and how are you going to be really approaching these and dealing with them? And these are just a few initiatives. There can be a lot more. And as you go into the, as you go into the years ahead, and only you can determine how successful they'll be.
All right. I'm sure you all have questions and comments. We have a few sort of things that I want to remember to say. A, a big one is thank you to everyone who helped put this together. Thank you to Christine and, and Tim and Keith and Vivian and everyone else who's been hanging out with us for the past couple of days and keeping us extremely well fed, housed last night. Thank you, of course, to the Shret team, the folks from Plano, Hampshire, who are working on a Saturday, hanging out in Temple. We are going to turn this PowerPoint around to you as soon as we can. We wanted you to have this to sort of look at, to start your conversation, to have your conversation, something that you can digest. And then in a couple of months, we're going to give you a report that's going to have a lot more detail. It's not, it's not going to be any big surprises in it. It's going to be what was in this PowerPoint today, but more of it in with more detail. And reminding you again, these are just suggestions. They're just ideas. It's up to you to figure out what you want to do from here. Any questions, comments? That includes our friends on Zoom too.
My question is regarding the proposed parking area. And if the highway garage is moved, will, would that take place of what you recommend for the lower common, which I find not acceptable. I, people love our common in the lower portion too, turning that into a parking lot. If, if, if the 60 spaces were made out there, would, we would not need that or we would still need that, is that?
I'll start to answer this question, but I suspect somebody else on the team might, which is that it goes back to what our last point was, which is that it's totally up to you. We gave you various options and you can combine them to meet your needs in whichever way you want. Sorry?
Sure.
Sure. From the parking perspective, you saw a lot of different options that we had up there. You can just take one of them and it's going to be a whole lot better than what you have out there today. So even if you just did where Main Street is adjacent to Town Hall and you didn't touch anything where the green space is in the, in the town common area, that's going to be more defined. It's going to show people where they can park. This has nothing to do with the DPW garage either. If the DPW garage moves, that's even more opportunity for parking up there. And you still don't have to touch the town common area. I think so, yeah. It, you know, I think that it, it definitely provides a whole lot more opportunity that we, than what you have out there today. That's correct. That's correct. It's really all up to you on what pieces and parts. It's not, you don't have to do the whole picture. You can just take little pieces and it's going to be an improvement over what's out there today.
Other comments, questions?
First of all, what are the, how many people have gotten run over on that street right there? What are, how many car accidents? How many people, animals, dogs, cats, whatever have gotten run over where we're looking at in that picture? Have, have we talked about the, the statistics in how many years? How many people? How many? The point is, what are we doing, making all these changes? When we haven't even looked at, looked at the statistics? So, and here's the other thing. I was, I was here last night in one of these groups. In most of the groups, we went over after everyone was done, wrapped it up. The main topic was the three areas that they were talking about. And most of all the groups that I was, that I was here with, didn't really want anything to do with bringing in more builders and housing. That's, and so, but today's brief, you wouldn't have known that because the majority of that brief was trying to get you to do housing. Putting up nice little pictures, nice gardens, it could feel good, trails. Has anyone hiked Heald Park or Heald Tract? It's right in our backyard. It's right there. We, do we need more walking trails? We've got great walking trails right there. But another big thing is when I go, the parking lot is full of Massachusetts plates. That's a problem. All right, because they trash. They, all right, so Wilton, I don't know if anyone's been to the Wilton, the Waterfalls? They shut that down. When I brought my kids there numerous times, it was more Massachusetts plates than New Hampshire plates. And it was trashed and it's shut down. I mean, maybe because the, they have lack of parking, but they got signs everywhere over there. That's just two examples. So let's go to the first one. We asked about the statistics. Are a lot of people getting run over? I haven't heard of one. So a lot of car accidents there? If there was a lot of car accidents and a lot of people getting hit, I'd be like, we really need to change something in now. Second of all, moving this, have you talked, has anyone talked to the people that work in our, our highway department right here? First of all, it's, it's super simple. All you do, all they would like to see is two more bays added, like garage doors, so they can get all their equipment in there. Not moving it, because if we move it, who's going to pay for that? We are. And they did mention that Temple's pretty low, we're not in debt. Well, let's keep it that way. And remember, government money is not free. There's always strings and hooks attached. All right.
Yeah. To ask their questions and, and make their comments.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you. So I just wanted to go over the three pieces and where this briefing went. And I just, maybe I, I'm overreacting, but I just want to get it out there. Second piece, that's that piece over there where they, that one right there, I guess, right? It's right behind us. That property, they talked about putting housing in there and all this stuff. However, many homes you come up with, you could come up with 12 homes, you could come up with 50 homes. I'm sorry, that's not going to save TES. You want to know what would really help us for, to make our living more affordable? Lower our taxes, gas prices getting lowered. Of course, that's a bigger issue than Temple's, right? And like heating costs and stuff like that. But what Temple can have the effect on is lowering our taxes. And if TES, I pulled my kids out of TES because they weren't getting a good education. Our nickname for that is a babysitting school. And I'm sorry if I offend any teachers there. It's not your fault. It's the government's curriculum. I'm sorry. So the point is, like, if we could get our taxes down, maybe? Because our school taxes are what, 60, 70% of our taxes? That's big. Could we get our taxes down with shutting down TES? It's a great building though. We could repurpose that building for some great stuff. They've got, it's a great facility. The point is there is the housing, putting the housing back here, all these houses is not going to save TES. So what are we doing? Do we really want another, a bunch of houses stacked onto each other right here? I mean, it's literally right there. And then the other part is, the other one was, oh, that's TES. What was I talking about then? Anyway, the other, third one was, it's kind of the same thing. What are we doing? 12, 10 houses, it's not going to save TES. This is in grant money, strings and hooks. We have low debt in Temple with our, like, like they said, with their taxes. Come on. Yeah, we can all work together and the people that we want in.
Thank you very much. If you could wrap up your comments, want to give everyone a chance.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to push back on, on saying, well, we haven't seen anyone killed yet in Temple as being a reason for not improving our pedestrian safety. I have trouble walking and often I go to the end and I park over this side and I walk over the other side. And I'm concerned about someone barreling down the hill and knocking me over. I think we have to ask the question, if it was your brother or your sister or your child that was hit because of inaction of this town next year or five years in the future, who bears the responsibility? And so I, I really think that argument is, is very inappropriate at this time. We know traffic will increase. We have an uneven highway, we have no lighting and we hope that downtown activities will increase. So that's mine. Thank you.
Other questions?
I just want to say thank you to you guys. And just to reiterate to everybody that these are just recommendations. All of it, whatever happens is up to all of us and it's going to be a process to go through. And it's just great to open everything wide out and say, this is possible, this is possible, this is possible, just to get you to start thinking about what options are and whatever we want to do is what we'll do. So thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Great reminder. Other questions and our friends on Zoom too are welcome to raise their hand and ask questions.
And this is a difficult comment or observation for me to make. But I did attend the Shret yesterday and I don't think that we talked about any of this. Like what was briefed today? We did, we didn't talk about this. We were asked our vision of, or what we see when we see this land and what maybe we want to see. But we didn't, as a town, debate any of this. And I think that's what we're seeing as people's reaction here. And I just want to put that observation out there because I, I think it will be incorrect to, to have the results of the Shret published with a, an illusion that the town debated this, because I don't believe that we, we did. I just wanted to say that.
Other questions?
Sean Radcliffe. I usually approach things with trying to not change anything because I like Temple the way it is. I was really amazed, impressed by the suggestions that this group did. They were all well thought out, they, thought provoking and, and not at all offensive. I, I, I was just impressed. So every idea was, was addressing a potential problem and seemed not only creative, but aesthetic and in line with Temple. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Thank you all for being here and, and coming to the presentation. Thank you for everyone who came out and participated yesterday in any way, shape or form. It was great to hear from all of you and we're really looking forward to just seeing whatever you do next. So good luck as you, as you move forward and making whatever changes you do or do not want to see. So thank you.